The invocation tonight is going to be by Michelle Colson.
Let's pray. Thank you, Father, for another day, another day to repent and ask for forgiveness. We're very thankful to live in a country where we are free to pray. And thank you for this wonderful town, or this wonderful city of Argo. Let us pray for our city council, our mayor, our policemen, our firemen, our volunteers, and all of our citizens. And I wanted to read Psalms 117. Praise the Lord, all nations, extol him, all peoples; for great is his steadfast love towards us, and faithfulness of the Lord endures forever. Praise the Lord. Amen.
Amen.
(Inaudible) to the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Okay, approve the minutes of the regular council meeting on the 27th, the 27th, 2017. Did everyone have a chance to review those? And do we want to go ahead and approve or make a motion to approve those tonight? Any comments or conversation, anything? Amanda, roll call, please. Oh, I'm sorry, I'm sorry. Okay, somebody can make that motion.
I'm making the motion that we approve the minutes from the meeting on 2/27/2017.
Roll call, please.
Still got seven seconds.
Yes.
Counselor President Bowman?
Yes.
Counselor President Massey?
Yes. Oh, I'm staying.
Mayor President Aldridge?
Yes.
Counselor President Brown?
Upstein.
Mayor Bradley?
Yes.
Okay, now we would like to ask civil engineer J.T. Murphy and Skipper Consulting, and Skipper Consulting, Richard Cottle.
Good evening, council. J.T. Murphy with Civil Consulting Incorporated. And we've got Richard Cottle with Skipper Consulting. Last week, myself and Kelly Huff-Studler with Civil Consultants met with the mayor and Tony Aldridge to discuss some of the traffic issues that are out on Argo Margaret Road and Highway 11, specifically in the morning time and in the evenings around 5:00, between probably 4:30 and 6:00. I think most everybody around here knows that it backs up in the mornings and in the evenings. So what we discussed with them is that the Regional Planning Commission of Greater Birmingham, they actually, there's actually a grant, it's known as an Apple Grant. And what that Apple Grant is, is it's a, it's funding that allows the city to have a traffic study completed by an approved consultant. Skipper Consulting is one of the eight firms on that list to do these studies. And basically, what that study does is it allows consultants to come in, do traffic counts, look at the, look at the current traffic situation, look at what the traffic's going to be doing five to 10 years in the future, and develop some immediate, short-term, and long-term solutions to those traffic issues. The grant, what it does is, it'll, it's a $60,000 grant. The city would have to match 20%, so it's a $48,000, $12,000. So the city would be responsible for $12,000 of that. But you get, what would be the outcome is a written report with all of these solutions. And Richard here, he's going to step into a lot of the details and be able to answer any of the questions that you guys might have. Richard's responsible for several of these reports that he submitted through this grant. So, Richard.
Sure. Thank you, J.T. And mayor members of the council, my name is Richard Cottle. I'm a professional engineer with Skipper Consulting. We're located on Bam Road, just down the street here in Trussville. Been there just about 20 years, and most of us have been practicing, the firm have been practicing engineering together for close to 30 years now. As J.T. mentioned, one of the studies that we've been doing quite a bit of lately is known as an Apple Grant. Advanced planning and programming and logical engineering. I don't know exactly what the RPC acronym stands for, but it is a, it is a grant program for doing traffic studies. Based on the conversations I've had with J.T. and with Kelly at Civil Consultants, what we, what we're proposing to do is to look at a study area. That study area would really begin down at the interchange of I-59 and Argo Parkway, particularly the off-ramp from I-59 northbound on Argo Parkway. We know that backs up in the afternoon and it needs some type of treatment. Then look at Argo Parkway from I-59 down to Highway 11. Highway 11 from Argo Parkway up to Argo Margaret Road. And then that short section of Argo Margaret Road until you get back over the railroad tracks. Three primary outcomes that we would envision of the study. The first one of those would be immediate improvements. And that's improvements that could be done, that could be implemented, very low cost, in-house forces, local funding, things like signal timing modifications, signs, striving, and that matter. The Apple Grant specifically does not allow for implementation, so you cannot actually buy signs or do striving with it. But since signal timing is an issue, is an engineering issue, signal timing changes can be included within the work. And I'll get, I'll present to you a couple of ideas regarding that here in a minute. So some improvements can be resolved even within the scope of the, of the study. Short-term improvements would be the next outcome, improvements that could be implemented using typical state or federal aid funding. And that would be things like turn lanes, limited widening, a new traffic signal. I'm sure that you've probably heard a billion times, people asking for traffic signals up at Argo Parkway, I-59. Those types of things could be studied and, and the funding sources and cost estimates put together for that kind of work. And those are kind of, those are the kind of projects that the state usually has money to implement. The purpose of the Apple Study is to bring projects forward into the state aid as a better way process. And then finally, what we'd also like to look at here is long-term improvements. Long-term improvements that would require extraordinary funding and funding sources, new roadways, relocated roadways, perhaps a bridge over the railroad tracks, a concept level look at what would be required to do that. And that's, you know, something that you could take to your, to your senators, your congressmen, and, and look for extraordinary funding sources for doing that kind of work. Projects that generally are beyond the range of even what the state has in their budget. Those are the three outcomes, the medium improvement, short-term improvements, long-term improvements. Some of the other outcomes, the ancillary outcomes, would be cost estimates for every one of the improvements, funding source identification for the various improvements, and also a schedule about how long it would take to get each of the improvements in place. J.T. already mentioned it, so I won't dwell on it long. The study would look at existing traffic. We would actually do traffic counts within the study area, and then project traffic out 10 years. I know there's a lot of development going on, Argo and Margaret, that's going to affect that area in there. And so we would want to look at anywhere from five to 10 years out, and what the impact of that traffic would be. Just some of the ideas and things that could be looked at in a very short-term manner. Check the existing railroad preemption at the signal at Argo Margaret Parkway and make sure it's working correctly. Check the timings. I live in this area, I live up in Springville, so I know this area well. And I know that when that, I know the, I know when the signal is preempted, when it comes back green for Argo Margaret Parkway, it doesn't give it near enough green time to make up for what it has lost. Another thing that we see that's a problem there is that some vehicles are very slow coming across the railroad tracks. We would look at, perhaps look at some type of detection that would look at the far side of the railroad tracks and see how many cars are awaiting and give the signal additional green for that. That could be done with video and radar equipment. And then the primary thing that we see that could help immediately, that could be done as part of the study, is you know and I know that the traffic patterns in the morning and the afternoon are completely different. The signal controller that's out there in the cabin right now can be programmed for different patterns for the morning and the afternoon. And that would be within the scope of this study to, to undertake that type of activity. You've already heard quite a bit about the Apple Study. It's up to $60,000. We have done projects ranging anywhere from $50,000 to $60,000. We did a very similar project to this for the city of Mountain Brook recently. It does require a 20% match of $12,000 for a $60,000 study. It can be underway probably within four to six weeks. The money's already in place. The next steps would be to prepare a very short scope of work, and then go sit down with the staff member of the RPC, the Regional Planning Commission, who's in charge of the program, and line the, and line the project up. You as the city would do the consultant selection. As, as J.T. mentioned, there are eight consultants in the Birmingham area that do this type of work. We are one of those eight, and by no means my, does my being here tonight mean that I have to, our firm has to be selected. It's an open competitive, every, each one of the eight firms would have the chance to submit their qualifications to you, to be reviewed. The what's required right now, a one- to two-page scope of work, and then go sit down with the RPC, have them meet and press the project. So hopefully we've covered everything in about five minutes there, and be glad to answer any questions you might have. Yes, sir.
I understood you're starting the route coming to Argo, to Parkway, then up 11 and up to the railroad.
Yes, sir.
Why not decide railroad either? Or is it just a state, or state roads, or is it?
Well, I think that the problems that you have on Argo Margaret Road, in terms of traffic operations, are primarily because of the railroad and the signal, and that if those were cleared up, you wouldn't really have any issues any farther up Argo Margaret Road. Until perhaps you get all the way up here to Blackjack Road and turn lanes, but that's really, you're getting beyond what the $60,000 study can cover at that point.
Anybody else have anything?
I was just going to make a statement. Just, I want to say in full disclosure, that how these guys got up here, I've known the president of Civil Consultants since 1986, and one of their, one of the vice presidents. I worked alongside them, and actually worked for them from 2001 through 2015. So, the reason that I, and I made the phone call, after discussion with the mayor, the reason that I made that phone call to these guys is because I know them and I trust them. But I did want to disclose to you that I had a, you know, a previous, previously worked for them. I have, I don't work for them now, had it for a couple of years, but that's everything I know when I know Skipper Consulting. I've known Dale Skipper for 30 years. So, that's how they got here.
I've worked behind them for several years without them even knowing it, but they're well-respected, and if there's a problem out on the job, call these guys to get what's going on, or figure out what we're going to do next.
Yeah, niggas would say I wouldn't have called and wouldn't recommend calling if I had not felt like these are top guys.
Let me ask one question once. If we were decided to do this, how long would it take to meet with the people from Apple or to, to talk about getting the grant?
We could probably have the scope prepared in one to two days after your notice. And by the way, that's costing you no money to do that. And have a meeting with, the man's name is Mike Kazarovski, the Regional Planning Commission. He would, I imagine we could meet with him within two to three business days from requesting the meeting.
Could you spell, spell that last name?
No, probably not. If you don't mind me looking at my phone, I could.
Mayor, that's actually on the second page.
On the second page, okay.
I could have been, I could have been that light.
Okay, thank you.
We don't call them Taz, so.
Okay, thank you. We appreciate you coming out tonight and giving us a little information on this.
Before you, sir, before you run off. Do we want to address that right now?
I think y'all need to think about it and do it in our next meeting, that way you give everybody an opportunity to kind of discuss it among themselves and, you know.
Okay, sooner the better, but make action on that.
I think so too, that, I think when you.
I live on this side of the tracks now.
I would like to add something that's, and I've talked with the mayor about this earlier. I think that, you know, we got that, it's an 80-20 grant, so we've been responsible for up to $12,000 of the cost. And speaking with the mayor, I personally feel like that $12,000 should not be borne by Argo completely. If we're talking about a problem, it's not just a city of Argo problem, it's a, it's a regional problem. And so I think that of that $12,000, we need to try to ask for some, some help there from probably some of the other folks that are actually, you know, figuring traffic into this area that's, that's causing this problem.
I think we have 9,500 trips a day, or 9,300 on Argo Margaret Road. We've got 4,200 or so residents, so there's obviously.
And we know that there's a new subdivision, that there's probably going to be close to 200 houses in, down the street here. We've got Margaret's building over there, so we're talking 300-something houses over there. There's three new houses going up in my subdivision. Hidden Brook has 20 or 30 more houses going in there. So we're talking about in the next few years, some major traffic, probably another thousand cars in the next two years.
Every house generates 10 cars of that.
They've been counting my wife going in and out.
Thank you, guys. We appreciate you counting.
But can we not? Go ahead with the preliminary part.
If y'all feel comfortable voting, we can put it on.
All, all they're talking about is asking for the proposal.
Yeah, at this point, the, the two major steps that would have to be taken at this point, and I'll reiterate, it's costing you no money to do either one.
That's part of my life.
Is to prepare, is, yeah, I, I read the paper. I live up in Springville, I know all about the town there, so. The two main steps is to write a one or two-page scope of work, which basically I just covered most of that, standing, standing here tonight. And then the setup meeting with the RPC, and they will, the RPC, Mike Kazarovski, will tell us if there's money available, if this year or would be next year, if it's not. And, and give you a timeframe of when the, the request for proposals would be sent out. And request proposals is just basically your scope with a cover letter on it, sent to the eight firms that are eligible.
Y'all feel comfortable voting on that?
Can you do a scope of work for us, or who does that?
Yes, sir, I, yes, sir, that would be something I would be more than happy to do.
So, yeah, I think what, what, not to try to explain for you, but, but I think all Corky says, right now, we're not committing ourselves to spending.
Yeah, we're just finding out what they think we need to ask for, and, and then asking for it. And then we, after that, we all get ourselves a something.
Okay, Tony, you feel like making that motion?
I do. I would like to make a motion that we.
Well, I think you can, Mayor, y'all can do it under the item number six, it's fine. Make a motion to set up a meeting for whoever, whomever you call, who want to go.
So I'd like to make a motion that we engage with Skipper Consulting to, to set up a scope of work to go to the Regional Planning Commission and make the application for the Apple Grant for our study of Highway 11 and Argo Margaret Road.
Do I hear a second?
Can I amend it, or ask him to amend it?
Sure.
And go ahead and let you get with him and do it, get it done, and have it ready to, for the next, y'all will be out of town, but Tony was there, you were there. Go ahead and do, I think you got all, everything you just read, this is what's going to be the scope of work, go ahead and prepare it, and have it ready to present to the RPC. And then when we have our next meeting, will we need to prove advantage, or can we approve for them to go ahead and turn it into law? Well, we all need to, before we turn it into law. Prepare it and, and let me say it.
Get the ball rolling.
That's right.
Do I hear a second?
I'll second.
Uh, any discussion?
We did a good bit of that.
Roll call, please.
Counselor President Cowan?
Okay, yes.
Counselor President Bowman?
Yes.
Counselor President Massey?
Yes.
Mayor President Aldridge?
Yes.
Counselor President Brown?
Yes.
Mayor Bradley?
Yes.
So we can get the ball rolling. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, do we have Dick's imaging here? Did you get a call for getting reading? I did not. Okay, so we're done, we don't have anything. He was going to talk to us, but he's not here. Okay, our interview committee, report on the hiring of the part-time clerk, Tony Aldridge.
So I guess as a report, we interviewed, we interviewed four or five folks, the best they had in the world, applications, and four or five. And I think to my surprise, we had a lot of, lot of quality candidates. I think last Friday, we interviewed a candidate who we feel like, you know, is best fit for that, for that position, for that part-time clerk position. And I think we've also identified what we feel is the, is another person that we'd like to bring in while Amanda is out, so that we can have him as kind of a backup. And I think that fits with what that person would like to do. So, not sure exactly what the proper way to do this is, but we have a candidate that we'd like to put before the council to, to accept as our new part-time clerk. And her name was Joanne Kincaid, she's from Springville, I don't know.
Do I hear a second?
I'll make a second.
Any discussion? Roll call, please.
Counselor President Cowan?
Yes.
Counselor President Bowman?
Yes.
Counselor President Massey?
Yes.
Mayor President Aldridge?
Yes.
Counselor President Brown?
Yes.
Mayor Bradley?
I'm going to stand if this committee was going to appoint, and is the council's position to appoint a new clerk, or the part-time clerk.
Mayor, I'd also like to make a resolution to, I'd also like to entertain a resolution, or make a resolution, or a recommendation that we bring Mr. John Saunders in, in, during Amanda's absence, and try to get him trained, so that we can have a kind of a backup, a secondary backup person. I think Mr. Saunders had, had stated that he would like to do that, but I don't think he's looking for anything that's permanent, full-time, for lack of a better way to describe it. He wants to do a lot of different things, and I think he'd be a good candidate for that slot. So I would like to make a motion that we bring Mr. Saunders in during Amanda's absence and get him trained as well.
Okay, do I hear a second?
So, is Joanne going to come in when Amanda leaves?
She's going to come in.
I understand we have to.
Joanne's going to come in as soon, as soon as we let her know that, that we, to fill the part-time position when Amanda's gone. But Tony feels as though that when Amanda is gone, that we may need somebody else to fill in, you know, so he wants her and him to come in once Amanda does leave.
Yeah.
You're right, we have got to provide the pay. We just debris for one part-time somebody, and we went through that, we'll have to.
That is correct.
We'll have to make a motion on that.
Yeah, we'd like to amend that, to add there.
And we can, we can table that for now, because he won't be coming in until she's gone, so we can work through that.
Okay, I'll withdraw that motion.
Is that okay?
That's, that's my.
He's withdrawing his motion, so we're just going to hire Ms. Kincaid to fill the part-time position.
What, um, did you set up a pay for Joanne?
Yes, she's coming in at, at $15 an hour.
And that'll be full-time immediately.
Yes, she's going to say she is, she is ready immediately.
She'll need to make your, to try and as much as possible.
She said she could start coming in tomorrow.
Not tonight?
No, not today.
This would have been some good experience.
She said she, she could be here tomorrow. Okay, anything else on this? Okay, on the mayor's report tonight, the only thing I've got to report is the Budget Committee and I worked Friday on, for about three or four hours on the budget. We're going to meet tomorrow night and Wednesday night to talk with both chiefs about their budget. And then once that has been done, then we're going to present it to the council for them to look over and give their thoughts. So we're hoping in the next two weeks, we're going to have a budget passed. We've gotten most of our numbers and everything that we feel like we need, but we're hoping to get that budget passed real soon now.
Get that, we're going to have some time to look it over.
Oh, yes, 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 yes. This is just a budget meeting, working on getting all the numbers.
Some business went pretty quick.
Yeah, yeah, we're just, this is the budget meeting. I, at our last meeting, we appointed a budget committee.
Okay, I'm with you, Chris.
And that budget committee's looking over the numbers now, and then once that, they get it, we finalize all the numbers and everything, and they'll come back to y'all for y'all's approval and, and look over.
Do we need to, do we have to talk on our, who doesn't accept, and do we need to talk on our?
Yes, yes, we probably do. You want to make that motion?
Should we amend the motion?
Yeah.
I would like to propose an amendment to the motion that I made in the vote that we took to hire the new part-time city clerk to include her pay of $15 per hour.
Yeah, she's going to be charged next time.
And I'll second that.
Okay, roll call, please.
Counselor President Cowan?
Yes.
Counselor President Bowman?
Yes.
Counselor President Massey?
Yes.
Mayor President Aldridge?
Yes.
Counselor President Brown?
Yes.
Mayor Bradley?
Yes.
Okay. And city attorneys' report?
Mayor, I had two things. Hopefully, for your review, for the council review, at the next meeting will be our draft resolution on the littering issue we discussed through prior meeting. And also, for further review, the council will be the facilities reservation permit form and use agreement. As we talked about in the work session, we have a couple of things we want to make, a couple of changes to that. So I see that as number 16 on our agenda, and when we come to that item, I would recommend that the council table that issue chart next meeting.
Okay. Please report Chief Downe.
Oh, I'm standing here for Chief Downe tonight. He's not feeling well, and hopefully he'll be back tomorrow, but he's home in bed. I hope he hasn't got the flu, because it's going to.
That's exactly what I said.
Yeah, yeah.
Am I not on the same one or these two?
So if you look at the report, you can see what we did for the. So if you look at the report, you can see what we did for the month of February, the number of felony reports and misdemeanor reports that we made. Mister criminal arrests were 14, a warrant served on arrests 14, a total of 16. And those two came from other agencies that had, in particular NCIC, that we pulled over. And so they came and picked them up, so that's the difference in those figures. The total number of calls last month was 967. Domestic violence, had eight of those. Assistant Fire Department, 29 calls. Patrol requests, we had 289 of those. Public assistance, 52. Business check, 6,300. And response calls on I-59, we had a total of 46 last month. And if you go to the next page, you can look at the monthly comparison reports, and we just have a slide-up tick in calls and citations and DUIs, misdemeanor arrests, we have, traffic accidents. Kind of what you'd expect is the weather was so nice this past month. And I suspect as the weather gets prettier, our calls will go up and follow our DUIs and traffic accidents and everything else. That's about it for the police department.
Anyone have any questions?
No, I would like to say that I had an opportunity Saturday again to ride with, well, not again, that's the first time I've ridden with Officer Collier. But the last time I told the chief and I hadn't had a chance to talk to him, I said Saturday, but again, I was impressed with the police officers and the way that they handled the public. Got to see Captain Wells, so I was very much pleased, very proud, very proud to be a part of this council that represents that department.
Well, thank you so much. We appreciate that.
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
Thanks, Captain Wells. My report, Chief Pats?
Last month, there were only one structure fire, five brush fires, four fire alarms, 26 metal recalls, two mobile black vans.
And I am on this sheet.
And I'm on the other one.
We gave out 32 burn permits this month. That's up from 10 last month. That's an increase in burning going on, legal burning that is. We're right here on the edge of spring. Everybody's gonna be raking leaves, burning leaves, the whole nine yards. And there's never fails that several of them tend to burn the neighbor's yard up, that's why we're trying to clean their leaves up. But that's part of the process, I guess. I wanna stress the burn permits, the need for burn permits and fire safety while doing that. Like I said in there, in other words, don't burn the neighbor's yard up. The annual letter drive will be coming out this month. We're just waiting on a couple more signatures from seniors and it'll be going in mass production and it could be going out. Today, we had a call to the St. Clair County Prison to help them with a wildfire. We had several departments in the county page today multiple times and nobody responded. The, the departments that cover the area are all volunteer. It's not that they're not good departments or wanting to respond like that, they're all volunteers. There are enough times a day that everybody that works, there are no volunteers. And they're going through the same problem we are, the volunteer staff being low. So in turn, they start spreading out and paging different departments. Spring, when Argo went up there along with the staff up there, managed to stop the fire, backfire process, things like that, the brush truck and our ATV and a couple of fire trucks. But just things that go on in the county, nothing static, everything dynamic in the county. That's part of our mutual agreement with the county to do things like that. When we're hanging in the wind with everything out, well, they're gonna come and help us. And again, once spring wildfire season gets here, none of the departments in the county are big enough to handle large fires, so we all come together. We may be at the other end of the county, but we do our best to cover here in the, in the Argo city. We left a couple of folks in the city limits while the rest of us went out. But you see a fire truck going down I-20 with the lights on with Argo on the side of it, that's why we're doing that. We don't have to take the long way around to this side of town. But other than that, it's all out.
Any questions for Chief Pats?
No questions, but I got a statement. I said at the last meeting that they need to get a job coming to my house, they did the weather the other last time. They get there fast, they know what they're doing and they calm us all back, calm their body down when we're all in a panic. I just don't see how you can make it any better than what we got. Thanks.
Thank you, Mike. Row report, Ronnie Bowman, Tony Aldridge? Would you ask him?
I'm gonna table the Hickory Valley stuff till next.
Unless we won't talk to Alvin Power about that mess.
I am contacting them again tomorrow.
Yeah, we still got the same mess, at least.
Yeah, I wrote down Blackjack Saturday and saw it, Argo Margaret, Row Lane. Those are three major roads right now that's set free.
So when they came out the last time that I called them, it was basically just cleaned up?
They just did Bill Smith and did a little bit on Row Lane and a little bit on Blackjack and that's all they did.
From corner of Row Lane going toward Margaret in front of my property, I know my property's right toward it. Eventually I need to push that, I bought a loader today or I'm trying one out, I'm gonna push that mess down and get it pushed down, all their crap laying there that they cut and threw on the ground and I can't cover that stuff.
I stopped, I took pictures today of that.
So you're gonna contact them?
I'm gonna contact them tomorrow again.
I put my sign back up, somebody ran over it and gave me a dump it sign.
Okay. So anything else on roads, Tony?
I think, well, we're gonna table, table any decisions on Hickory Valley, but we did get two solid estimates on it. I think we decided who that we're going to, who we'd like to recommend awarding that to, but we've got some, some work for the attorneys to do before we're ready to actually put that to a vote.
So we're gonna table that, right?
Yeah, we need, need these bits and that kind of thing.
Okay, feedback report, Jim Lee?
Only thing I've got to report is that we have picked up a new donor last week from Central Food Bank gave us one, and we'll be picking up weekly from them. Last week, we got a lot of meat from them, so it'll be an every-week deal going forward with them also.
Also, there's two checks in there to be deposited, one from Clear Branch Church.
I haven't seen it.
And then one from Christian Fellowship. But there's two checks in there.
And who did you say the new donor was?
The what?
Who did you say the new donor was?
It's Aldi at Costco.
State Council, Ms. Emma Owen? She's not here tonight. Okay, we're gonna table the subsidy rental contract until the attorneys draw up the, redo our paperwork. Did you want to have anything to do with that?
Just got, we'll do a couple of changes.
Okay. I don't have any other comments. How about the council? Do the council have any comments tonight?
Just.
I suppose the day of next council.
Just on April the 20th, we're gonna do the cleanup on the roads.
Tony?
Twenty-seven. Twenty-fourth, seventh? Twenty-seventh. Twenty-fifth.
We're having this on early, so it takes up a pretty long stretch.
Any comments from the council?
Just April the 20th, we're gonna do the road cleanup, try to get a bunch of citizens out to help us out, churches and stuff.
Tony, I'm available if anybody needs IVs, you know, you see? My wife nervous, but I'm learning. And I'm not the reason she had to go back to the hospital.
Okay, public comments? I think Mr. Cox has signed.
The question really is just was, is there a list for road repair? And it's premature, obviously, without a budget, you can't make any determinations one way or the other.
We do have a list, but we're gonna redo that list and update on that list. Corky, Tony?
Your road's already on the list, that's what I'm talking about.
Yeah, it's on the list. Corky and Ronnie is going to kind of update that list some for us. But yeah, your road is already on that list to be, to have some work done.
Thank you for the action. I look forward to seeing it.
All right, thank you. Anyone else? Motion adjourned?
Motion.
All in favor?